All right, I'd like to call to order the June 1st meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. First up tonight will approve the minutes from our last meeting on May 18th. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Jen, all in favor? Next up is to review and approve tonight's agenda. Can I have a motion? Cherry, second. Penny, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, comments from the public to ensure the public's right to be heard. The board has set aside time during our meeting for public comment. Two minutes, two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. If there's anyone wishing to address the board, please raise your hand and Dr. Lettsie will turn on your, unmute you. Doesn't look like any comments tonight. So we'll move right into the meeting with reports and recognition. And first is our enrollment update with Ms. Bianca.
Darlene, you got it?
Yep.
You're up.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, Darlene, would you like me to share the screen for the enrollment update? Hand out.
That would be great, thank you.
Sure. There we go, and we know that the there's a lot of question around enrollment for next year and the impact of the closure and other things. So we thought that we would give a brief update tonight and just kind of regularly do that for a little while as, as things unfold. Darlene, if you'd like to take it from there.
Sure, good evening, everyone. So this is the results of the most recent data verification that we did just this last week. And Brian and Jill and I actually met with the elementary principals to review the most current information and have some preliminary discussion around what the numbers are looking like. And so if school were to begin tomorrow, this is the data as of now, the current data. And as you can see from looking at it, we're not, we're not too far away from any of the projections, especially the, the NESDEC projections. We are just starting to get some movement on the communication from the community in terms of any possible withdrawals or new registrations. But there aren't, there haven't been many unanticipated registrations or a large number of withdrawals at this point. That could possibly change in a few weeks, but we just wanted to reassure you that we're continuing to look at this data very regularly and have dialogue around it. Just to kind of take you through the columns here for anyone who's new to this. I think we shared it in the fall in terms of this format, but the columns are including the pre-K and each elementary grade at each of the elementary schools, the total for each of, each of the three elementary schools. And then a column for the projected enrollments for next year with all those individual grade level numbers, and then the total for elementary Saks and the high school, and then a K through 12 total. And then the next column is what the NESDEC projections would have been for 2021. So those are the blue numbers. And then the next column is the difference in terms of the numbers plus or minus. And then I wanted to add, in the event that we have questions about what the numbers were this past year, the numbers for this year. So you can see in terms of the big buckets, the elementary total projected enrollment was 1466. The NESDEC was 1497, so we have a difference there of 31. And this year's number was 1554. The Saks total projected enrollment moving forward was 1339. The NESDEC projection was 1319. So we have a difference of 20 there. The actual number this year was 1327. And for the high school, the, the total projected enrollment, 1371. The NESDEC, 1349, so a difference of 22. The actuals at 1285. And then the final column, the K through 12 total. And you see in parentheses there, the pre-K numbers weren't included, and I'll tell you about that in a second. Projected enrollment, 4176. NESDEC at 4165, so a difference of 11. And in actuality, we were at 4166. So not any huge discrepancies there, which is a good thing. And in terms of the preschool numbers for the 2021 school year, at this point, we're projected at 39. And do you see last year's number in the 19, 2019, 20 over in the far right column is 39? So we're the same numbers in that, in that field. The other sheet is simply, I wanted to share with you the enrollments for the elementary for last year and this year. And in total, a very small difference, so. It's looking good at this point. I wanted to reassure you that, again, we're continuing to, Jill and Brian and I, with the principals, to look at the numbers and to have conversations. And to think about where we need to make adjustments. And some of the planning for this, especially that related to the middle school is well underway in terms of making decisions about teacher placement number, so. Anything that I missed? I don't think so. So the difference, the total difference. I actually added this up. For the elementaries in 2019, the total is 1481. And for next year, it's projected at 1466. So not a huge difference there. Thank you. Any questions?
Cherry. I will unmute you.
Thank you. I'm just curious of what the communication is with the local real estate groups. I mean, I've, I've heard anecdotally that with COVID-19, that there's a lot of demand of people coming from the city out into the suburbs. Rentals are full. I've heard, you know, how houses are moving. And I'm just curious what you've heard directly from the real estate group and how that might affect these numbers. And I'm sure we won't be hearing or knowing a lot of that until later this summer, but I'm just curious if you've gotten any insight so far.
I don't have direct insight at this point, except to say to you that what I know from the discussions that I've heard and the trends is, you know, what you're saying is accurate about people moving in. I think the general consensus is that the, the spring market is just starting to happen right now. So houses are coming onto the market in a delayed manner, where we would have been starting, you know, the housing market in March. Things slowed down for those three months and are just beginning to pick back up. So, um, you know, anything can happen. And we're certainly watching it every day, but you know, you're right about the articles that we've all read about New York. People migrating in. And in the, in the beginning of the discussion about that, it was mostly rentals. What I'm hearing now is that the, the buyer's market is, is starting to kick up.
Darlene, does this include all of the, I guess, what we call the preregistrations, so incomplete registrations as well? Or do you count those after they're officially registered?
Jill, can you unmute yourself and help me with the answer to that?
So the number that you're looking at are the people that are in the full registration at this point. So we do have a number of families that we're tracking in the preregistration. What the preregistration means is that they've just completed the one-page survey that they're interested in coming to our district. It doesn't prove that they have housing within our community or residency within our community, so.
Not a full packet.
Right, so we tend to start tracking that now. We have, you know, we've been doing that with kindergarten since we did our orientations in January. But now we'll start tracking that, all the grade levels, K through 12. And so there's very few preregistered at this point that weren't preregistered earlier, if that makes.
And Jill's being very modest, because what I always hear her saying in these conversations are, how many packets are out? And she keeps track of how many packets are out, so. And asks the school secretaries to follow up when they have information on a family that's incomplete, they'll, will call and politely nudge them to make a decision if they can.
That's, and that's what I'm wondering, because I, I've actually received a couple of calls this week. You know, people asking, you know, is there room for us? And, you know, how do we, how do we, what's the first step we take if we're not, we don't actually have a lease signed or a mortgage, or you know, a closed house? And, and so, you know, just given the situation and because we're behind, you know, we're seeing a lot of later move-ins than we typically otherwise would have. You know, it might be helpful, just, and maybe they already do, but just remind, you know, ask the realtors to work with us on this and encourage people who, you know, once they have a signed contract at least, or a signed lease, to let us know as soon as possible.
Yeah, it's helpful if people are thinking about moving into town, if they reach out and let us know, and then they get a packet and we start to track them. They don't get counted in the numbers, but at least we can start to follow up with them as well if they're, if their goal is to move into town. And what we started doing last year that I think has been helpful is, if the packet's complete, except for a health form, we're counting them in the numbers now, where we used to hold them out, now we move them in. Because the assumption is they've done everything else, they're just waiting for the appointment with the doctor to get physical or get whatever they need. So that helps the numbers. The only other piece I'd add is the, we're in the midst of enrollment verification right now. And Jill and Rick have been working through that and doing a great job. But with that, sometimes the numbers come down right after that, because that's where we'll learn about folks that are moving out of town or maybe enrolling at a different school. So what you're seeing now is before, we've made those adjustments based on those verification numbers. And then it, so make them down afterwards, but then it, it goes back up over the summer if we have more in migration than out migration. So the numbers, the first column of projected enrollment, that would be if we open today for next year, that's everybody who's registered and who would be starting on the assumption that anyone who's leaving has told us, you know, that, that's just pushing the numbers forward that we currently have just today. But there'll be fluctuations in grades and buildings, whatever, based on all that.
So do we know how that compares to districts around us? You know, and we're basically holding pretty steady across all the K through 12. And I was wondering if there were any preliminary reports from, you know, Darien or Westport or Wilton as to what they were seeing.
I actually put that question out today, both on the enrollment and on the retirement. And by Friday, I should have some, some, you know, comparable information to share. The, you know, our, our projections, we were projected to just go up a couple of kids, like a handful of kids over the next four or five years. But I think, given all that's happened, those projections, you know, I don't know how reliable they are at this point. So we'll, but I'll ask around and ask our neighbors and see what they have, see what they're seeing. I, I think the realtors would tell you that they are, that demand is increasing throughout the region. So I think that they're, they would report that up pretty consistently across, but, but I'll find out for sure.
And and because, I guess it's, you know, it's the virtual education is a little bit harder for the younger grades. Are we seeing in the registrations for kindergarten that the kids are a little bit older? Do you think that at the, sort of at the, the border there, they're being held back, or is it just look like a regular year?
The kindergarten numbers haven't changed much. So when we went out on March 12th, is pretty much where the numbers still are. We may have had a few more that have come in, but we have not had people withdraw. So, and they did their virtual orientations and the principals at each of the schools reported, a lot of the and their parents are, are very excited to start school next year. So it was just kind of really positive and upbeat. And they've created videos and virtual tours for the kids to make them feel very welcomed. So very positive. I think we've seen a few more packet requests that have come in at this point, those kind of preregistered requests have started to come in for kindergarten. And those are the numbers we track really carefully and start to make those calls to find out whether they're going to remain in preschool or whether they're coming to our district. So those are usually those borderline on the fence kids.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Bianca, for that update.
My pleasure.
So next, we'll talk a little bit about the non-lapsing account update that Dr. Lettsie mentioned at our last meeting. We, I don't, Dr. Lettsie, feel, please feel free to add anything else, but we'll be meeting with Todd, circling back on our initial conversation with Todd Lavieri from the Board of Finance over the next couple of days. So we should have further updates for, for you all in our next meeting.
Yep, and just to share, it was, it was a good conversation with Todd, and he certainly understood the need to expedite access to resources in order to secure what we need in order to prepare our schools. So we're optimistic that our next conversation will be equally productive and move the, the decision-making along.
Great, thank you. All right, upcoming activities and opportunities, there are a lot of them, I know, so looking forward to hearing.
There are, there are. It's, I'm going to be juggling a couple of things here, but I'll, I'll move quickly through, but I'm glad to slow down or get into more detail, if you like, around anything. Our principals, the administrative, the cabinet, others have all been working hard to, as we were talking about just before the meeting, create experiences for our students and our families and our staff that are truly memorable and meaningful. And things that will, you know, that they'll take with them to help people feel good. You know, the, the disruption in the routine and the rhythm and the, the pattern of the school year has been a challenge for all of us. You know, we, we always look forward to certain milestones in our experiences in schools. And we often talk about how fortunate we are that we have a start, an end, and a periods of reflection and different sort of traditions and patterns and habits and routines that we always look forward to. So we've worked to recreate some, some of those feelings and some opportunities for students and families and staff to have the similar emotions around closure for the school year, around celebration of the work and those things. So the, as you know, yes, today was, was not a distance learning day. So that's thanks to the, again, the changes in the calendar, and next Monday will be the same. Hard to believe that we have eight distance learning days remaining in our calendar at this point. Just amazing how things fly, right, how time, time moves differently. Coming up though, on a couple of things to look forward to. On June 9th, when our elementary schools and at Saks, we have a fourth grade and eighth grade celebration for, to just give those students and those teachers and classes an opportunity to see each other one last time to say hi and bye and add some closure. So what we're doing in the afternoons at the three elementary schools, we've created time slots for each of the homeroom classes. The teachers will go to the school and be there. And then the families will be invited to drive through the school, class by class, just to slowly go by and see the teacher and wave and smile and, you know, be socially distant. But to have the, a little bit of closure for the fourth grade. It just, you know, help, help the students know how special they are to us and give the teachers an opportunity to see them one last time. I believe it's starting at 1 o'clock. And again, it'll be set up by homeroom, so they'll have the opportunity to do that. And classroom teachers will line up, they'll be at the front, and cars will pass by. It's also an opportunity for us to do some, some other things, you know, with different signs and things, just to celebrate our kids and our teachers. So that'll be very nice. Saks is doing something similar with the eighth grade whereby, I believe they're by team. They'll be scheduling that out. And parents and students will be invited to come drive by and have the teachers lined up and get, give an opportunity to see each other and smile and wave and do all those great things. You know, Zoom is a wonderful tool, but it doesn't replace actually seeing a person, you know, in real life. So I think that'll be a nice opportunity for our kids. And I know our, our staff as well, they, they miss their kids terribly. Of course, the 12th is the last day of distance learning. And we'll be, you know, transitioning, shutting things down at that point and giving students an opportunity to finish up anything that they have to, giving our teachers an opportunity to, you know, work through what's remaining. On the 15th is our high school graduation. And I want to thank Stuart Salabini and the CERT team. Stuart has done amazing job organizing and sort of mapping out and figuring out the distance and the time and, you know, sort of the hurdles we have to work through. I'm going to show you a quick picture of the route, which Stuart put together for us. Let's see. And there was a slight adjustment to the route. There we go. Because of the concern around shutting down all of town without having a, a detour route for, for folks coming or going. So in this, this is the new route, and you'll see what we'll do. A is the high school, if you take a look. So here's where we'll, we'll begin and we'll stage, and we have another diagram on the lineup and all of those things. So we'll stage here at A. We'll take a right out of the high school onto Farm, and then take a left onto South Ave and drive all the way up South Ave. And then we'll take a right onto Cherry, and then a right onto Main Street. And we'll take Main all the way down, back to Farm Road. We'll come up Farm Road. And we'll take a left into Saks. And we'll loop around Saks, and then we'll take another left back onto South. And then we take a right into Waveney. And the cars will drive up and through Waveney, and then come out over here on Old Stanford. And a couple of special pieces around, you know, things that we're dealing with it. Along the parade route will be the banners for the students that we've discussed a little bit. So every student has a banner with their picture and New Canaan High School, class of 2020, congratulations, looks beautiful. We are working to identify and to secure a radio frequency to use so that we can broadcast during the parade to the students that are in the cars, which I think will be really cool. And then, you know, some other surprises probably along the way that I know are being figured out. But as students pull into Waveney, and as they crest the hill, we'll have our faculty and staff lined up here for like a final wave goodbye. As you know, our, our graduation is so special. One of the things that I love about it is at the very end, after receiving their diplomas, teachers recess out first, form two lines, and then the kids come through and we have one more chance to, you know, give them hugs, shake their hands, give them high fives as they go live. We can't do any of those, but we can certainly wave and jump up and down and do whatever we can do at the end. And then they'll drive out and through. So the whole route is about four miles as they go, and will be led by the police department, the fire department, and, and others. And it should really be a nice experience for our kids, for our families. It's one car per family. And as we said, it's, it's, I think, going to be a very memorable experience for everyone. I know a lot of people are involved in doing things to, to help to make it special for them. On the 16th, the next day, we are, we're inviting all of our teachers to come back at each of the schools and to park around the parking lot at their cars. And we're going to set up windows of time for people to be invited to drive by to just see their teacher and teachers, their principals, the secretaries, the, all the folks that are in the, in the building to make it all work. People are going to miss and come by one last time to say goodbye and thank you. You know, we're thinking again about closure on the school year. You know, the distance learning, we're going to end it on the 12th. But for those kids that are interested and our staff that can, can do it, we want to also give that feeling of sort of, you know, a closure to the end of the school year. We always do so much with our kids to, as we transition at the end of the year, you know, different parties and activities and field days and other things. And we just, this is a different kind of year where we can't do that in the same way. So we think this will at least be an opportunity to see each other one last time and let people come through. Just again, to celebrate all of what was done this year, that is so incredibly impressive. What our, what everyone, the whole community pulled together and did on behalf of our kids. The, on that morning of the 12th, I mean, of the 15th as well, we're giving a little bit of time for some closure activities with families and, and staff and others, if they want to have the kids on one last Zoom call, have a, just a chat, have one more opportunity to get together, they certainly can do that as well. Again, it's more closure for them. We talked a little bit today about some, something for launch. We have a couple of students who are graduating from, from launch, so we're putting something together for those, those students as well and those families. And that will be announced a little bit later. And we have the sophomore simulation that's starting this week. Where, as you may be aware, every year we do a sophomore simulation of Model UN where they, our kids run the rooms and judges and different things. And it's really, it's a school-wide simulation of a Model UN experience for all of our sophomores. Very powerful, it's a, because Model UN is a great protocol and a great procedure for students to follow with a lot of critical thinking and writing and debating and discussing. So we didn't want to lose that, so the social studies department has put together a virtual experience to do, to do just that. And that's coming up in the next couple of days. And we're also running virtual field day. We've worked, Jonathan Adams and others have worked together to put in place a virtual field day for elementary students to do different things together, so that should be very fun, too. And that's coming up. What, did I miss anything? Anyone, there's so many moving parts. Anyone who's welcome to jump in on anything that I might have missed.
At the fourth grade and the eighth grade, we're also doing a virtual little ceremony with their parents and the kids as well, so.
Right. Jeff?
So I'm just curious about the the 31st of July, like I know it's kind of in flux. I just hope I had a lot of parents asking like, wait a minute, like is that a definite, is it or not? And I, I keep telling everybody, hopefully it's right, that there will be, so that technically the real graduation ceremony will be that way, correct?
Well, so we have a couple, there's a couple of things that we are scheduled, students are scheduling individual times to come get their diploma. And to take, get, you know, pictures and whatever, and that's happening before. We'll have the parade with the cars. We've set July 31st aside as a celebration, an opportunity to do something if we're able to. And if we can do something live with our students, we would look to do that. If we can't, we'll, we can, we'll try to do something virtual. It's not going to be a quote-unquote graduation, as you are used to it, with all of the pomp and circumstance. If we can get together on that date, it'll be more of a celebration, pull some kids together, you know, a couple of speeches, a couple of nice pieces to it. Maybe even give them an opportunity for some music from the band or the chorus and things like that. But it wouldn't be a traditional gown and robe and, you know, two-hour-long graduation ceremony at that point. In part because I think we're going to, a lot of kids are going to be gone doing different things. So what we really are thinking about is that it would really, it'd be a celebration for our kids, something kind of fun and, and some closure for our seniors that would be a meaningful experience for them. It all hinges on what we're able to do. You know, where the guidance has changed as of Friday. It went from groups of five to groups of 10 indoors and 25 outdoors. They also expanded for graduations to go up to, you know, or, and religious services, I think was up to 100 or 150, whatever those numbers are. I mean, for us, we have to get to the thousands, right, to do a traditional graduation. But we can again, put something together that would be meaningful and memorable for our kids, and that's the goal.
Okay, so the, wearing the cap and gown and getting pictures and getting the diploma, that's all happening, just because I haven't heard anything. Like, so that's all happening before the 15th?
Yep, students are going to get, well, or after, they're going to have an opportunity to schedule a time to come to the school to get their diplomas, to take the pictures, to, you know, Mr. Egan will be there, other administrators will be there, I'll be there when I can. And we'll be a part of it and at least be able to see them that way, yeah.
Well, I know it's not what anyone would have ever wanted or wished for, but we so appreciate all that you're doing to make it special as possible, so thank you.
Well, you know, it's a, it's a community effort. It's amazing how people pull together and different ideas bounce around and you get some things going. So again, it's, we love our graduation, we love what we do, and we want to create something that's equally memorable and meaningful for kids, and that's our goal. And we have great assistants and partners in doing that, and I'm, I'm confident we're going to be able to do it. Yeah, I think. Oh, Julie.
There we go, sorry. Um, just along those lines, I, as, as I shared before, uh, just when I went to my nephew's yesterday, yesterday in ride, they had a similar kind of parade. And the, my only extra takeaway from that, they, they loved it. It was fantastic, a lot of fun. And I'm sure you guys are already thinking of this, but we want to make sure that really the community knows about it. And I just, I like, I see Grace and, and Mike are on this call and I just think, you know, I think it's really important that the town, that the kids feel embraced by the town too. And, and, um, you know, that people will come out specifically for that. So I just think that that's an important piece. And again, I'm sure you've already thought about that, but I just want to make sure that it's well publicized so that, that folks who don't have kids in the system or who have younger kids are aware that, you know, this is a town-wide event, that we're celebrating these kids who've, you know, gone all the way through our, our school system. So that's all.
Yep. And what we're, we're going to look to do, we have to figure out exactly how much room we have, but we'd like to invite people who'd like to, um, be a part of it, hopefully to Waveney where we can have them kind of spread out, uh, as the kids drive through and, you know, have enough spaces for community members to come and to, uh, to cheer them on as well. And anyone who lives around, along the route, we certainly, you know, encourage them to come on out and to cheer as the kids come by. And we're, we've, we're talking, like I mentioned before, the radio station, we're talking with our film crew, see if we can livestream it as well. We'll be recording it. We have, um, one of our teachers, Anna Moody, had the students, um, submit a very, a short clip of what they're going to miss most about leaving New Canaan High School. What are they going to miss most about New Canaan High School? And then we're, she's putting all that together and we'll play that over the radio, you know, as, as they're driving. Uh, we also have Pablo, who's worked to put together the, um, front porch photo video where every senior's been asked to submit a picture of them, uh, wearing their regalia, you know, outside, um, throwing their cap, doing something. And that's all been submitted and Pablo's putting that all together into a, you know, a video montage kind of thing that's going to be beautiful. And yes, at some point over the summer, we'll invite students to come and get their banners. They can have those as keepsakes as well about all of this when we take them down. We're going to leave them up for a little while, but when they come down. So, yeah, I think all of that, um, helps to contribute, I hope, to students knowing just how important and special they are and how much we value them and, and thank them.
Great, it's wonderful.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you. I, yeah, I have to add that banners are really truly beautiful and, um, it was nice to see. I, we saw the preview last week that Mr. Egan put up. They look amazing and it's just really nice to see the community come together and support our seniors. So certainly appreciate, you know, all the effort that everyone is making to make this happen. So I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, if I can, just on that, on that regard, Katrina, the, I do want to say thank you. The town has been a great partner in this. You know, Tiger and John Howe and others, when asked, they jumped right into it, said, yep, we'll figure this out with, uh, hanging the banners. We're hanging some of them around the school, certainly on the posts that we have, but we don't have 301 light poles. So they're going to also be again, up and down the parade route and Tiger's helping, John's helping, the highway department's helping. They really, uh, want, are jumping in and John De Federico and Leon from the police department and everybody, and I could go on and on about, you know, police, fire with Captain Hennessy, everybody. They've done a wonderful job and every one of them just kept asking, what can I, you know, what can I do? How can we get involved and how can we help? And most of all, again, I want to thank Stuart and the CERT volunteers who, um, just stepped forward and just said, okay, this is, this is, uh, the vision and then put together some of the maps and did, did the planning and everything to make the vision a reality. Really powerful to see the community coming together in support of our, our students like that.
Yeah, it'll be nice to have a really happy event. So it'll be great.
Yeah. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Our last topic is the, an update from the reopen schools committee. Maybe I'll just kind of open it up and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Letzti for more detail. But, um, I just want to thank the members of this committee, um, those of you step forward and are able to, you know, assist and be part of this important process. Julie and Deanna, Penny and Jen. And I know, um, many of you are, you know, staying in touch and, um, attending the meetings when possible. And obviously, oh, you know, we'll be updating regularly and open to feedback and thoughts from all of you. Uh, we were joined last week by all the members of the cabinet. And the topic and the focus of our meeting was, uh, summer school. As you may have seen, the state issued guidelines and rules for operating summer schools, uh, on May 20th. So we reviewed those guidelines and, um, they're extensive. And I think, you know, the committee agreed that our highest priority right now is to open school safely and on time in the fall. And with that, as sort of the highest priority, um, you know, comes some challenges and many considerations. So, um, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Dr. Letzti and to the other members of the committee for any comments, um, and more detail on what we discussed.
Sure. I'll just start with, um, the, it was my intention to include, uh, some of this information for you in advance and I apologize not being able to do that. The, but certainly glad to have, oh, you know, any conversation question here tonight. When we, when we reviewed the guidelines, uh, that were put out by the state, the 18 pages of guidelines, um, it was striking to note just how prescriptive they were in the, the requirements and expectations to have people in the building. For instance, there were two pages on bathrooms, uh, and how to clean and manage and, and take care of the bathrooms. There are, um, similar sort of restrictive guidance that's issued around buses and transportation and students on the bus and, um, yeah, sharing of materials, sharing of devices, sharing of spaces. Really, as you sort of peeled it all back, uh, they, they wound up being restrict, so restrictive that we really felt that the right approach is to sort of keep our eye on the prize, as Katrina mentioned, make sure that we have the space and the time and the capacity to do everything that we need to do to prepare to open up in the fall and whatever, um, structure and whatever that's going to look like. So we looked at the, when we looked at our programs, you know, we run, we run three, we run two and then kind of support the third and the enrichment. We run our extended school year program, our ESY program. We run a summer school program, which is a credit recovery program. And then we run, we don't run, but we sort of, you know, we're the aegis for the summer enrichment program, uh, which goes in and runs through in the summer with all the different activities. Back to their credit, about three, four weeks ago, um, the people who run each of those programs started asking, you know, should we prepare to do this virtually? And, uh, and our feedback to them was, you know, let's start, start preparing for it because we don't know what's going to happen. If everything goes the, another way and we can flip a switch and we can bring everybody into the building, then, you know, we'll, we'll do that. We know how to do that. But since we need to figure out and learn what to do for the virtual, let's get started sort of thinking about and considering what, uh, you know, challenges with that might be. At this point, as we look at those three programs and we look at the guidance from the state and, and what we're doing, where we are, um, we're, we're going to go virtual, uh, for all three of those programs. And so they've been looking at, um, you know, so how do we do this and what's it going to look like for people? And there may be some advantages in different ways. I mean, I think with Dr. Krenz, he mentioned in that, by going virtual, there may be students that can participate who aren't in town. You know, New Canaan students that might be away for a period of time over the summer that might open up different opportunities for them. But we really feel that it's the right thing to do, given the, the known, um, expectations for us in the fall, given the, um, the challenges with having people in our building, the costs alone in having people in the building, uh, the retrofitting of restrooms that would need to occur, the staffing needs that exist around cleaning and timing, um, that it's really, it just, it's the, we believe it's the right thing to do. The same is going to be with our renters and with our camps in the summer. Those requirements are the same as far as the, the bathroom and the air and the, uh, you know, all the work that needs to be done. The, um, the one thing we are, uh, looking at and optimistic we'll be able to problem solve for would be outdoor camps, sports camps for kids that might be two, two and a half hours long. There are a couple of camps that run through the booster club for, uh, like K4 students that are kind of like all sports camps. And we're trying to figure out, is there a way to do it if they're outside only? The challenge is the restrooms, to be honest with you, and the requirements around, um, you know, cleaning and disinfecting the restrooms throughout the course of the day. So we're trying to, we're working to problem solve that to see if there's a way that we can do it. But, uh, beyond that, we don't, we don't foresee any activities in the building this summer, um, which will give us an opportunity to, you know, continue to prepare and to, build out, build out whatever needs to be, uh, done and created in order to be sure we can open in the fall and whatever structure we have in place at that point.
Okay.
Sure.
Um, yeah, Brian, so I just want to say that I definitely agree with the approach to focus on the fall, um, which is why I was surprised to get that, um, the New Canaan Rams booster email today saying that they were, you know, optimistic and planning to have some of the summer camps still running. And they specifically mentioned, for example, basketball. So I just want to make sure that we've got a clear communication out to the community so that our families can plan, um, because I think everything you're saying makes sense, but that actually is not kind of what the message was communicated out today.
That's unfortunate because there must be a miscommunication somewhere because we've been pretty consistent. So I'll have to catch up with Jay. The, unless they can do it outside, um, it's really the use, we've, we've really been pretty clear about the use of the building. So we'll get that communication out. We do have a, a draft that, uh, you know, we've looked at and we'll, we'll polish before it goes out. We wanted to have the opportunity certainly to speak with you first, um, before sending out a, a district-wide communication around the summer school piece or the, you know, use of buildings. So that's why it hasn't gone out, uh, since Thursday. But, uh, but yeah, I'll make sure we get on the same page with the booster club. Thank you, Sheri. I haven't seen that email that you mentioned. I will. Yes, Carl?
You know, when you think about the guidelines that they issued for, for summer programming, I imagine they may end up being the roadmap for the fall or certainly a template to start thinking about it. As you kind of looked at that and then what would be required, if that was what the requirement was for the fall, you know, there was the, those detailed guidelines, what are the implications with respect to that, including some of the things we talked about a couple of weeks ago with, you know, automatic toilet covers and, you know, hand sensor sinks and, and all of that, which was, you know, quite elaborate and, um, and expensive. Would all those things, you know, be required in practice?
Yeah.
To practically open with those guidelines?
Well, you know, I think that, uh, if looking at the guidelines and, and projecting them to the fall, the first place you look is on the transportation guideline. And currently in this guidance, we would take a full-size 72-passenger bus and bring it down to, I believe, is it 12 students, Dr. Kitting? Yeah, 12 students. So just that alone, it means, the joke is it would take us a week to bring the kids to school. So like something, something like that, that has, there has to be a change there. There has to be some give there that we can, and, you know, maybe if students are wearing masks and they're, they use sanitizer when they walk on the bus, these, can you get more students on the bus? Can you do other, other things to? So we're going to be working with the state and with different groups around the state, with DASCO, with different, uh, you know, interest groups, CASBO, CAPS, others, to try to bring an operational lens to these guidelines that they've put out so that we can, can hopefully try to shape them in a way that can, that's manageable, is workable. The bathroom piece, for instance, many of our bathrooms have sensors, you know, so the high school, when it was redone, they have the sensors and the wa, for water, so you put your hands under them, uh, but they're only on for five or seven seconds. They have to be on for 20 seconds, you know, in order to, you know, it takes that long for, to wash your hands to kill the virus. So e, even those kinds of things, we've got to look at all of it. When I asked the question about, you know, what would the guidance likely look be? Would it be a percentage of capacity in the rooms or would it be a total number? They referred me back to the guidelines for the summer and said they'll probably be similar to the way we structured those, which means it would give us a number of kids that could be in a classroom, if that's accurate. That's not a great approach in our minds because each, some of our classrooms are different size. We go from 750 square feet to 1,200 square feet or so. So why would it be a set number of kids if you have more or less room in different places? So we're going to keep trying to work with them and shape them. But all of the work we've been doing around the toilet covers and toilet seats and, uh, you know, even thinking the inventory around technology, uh, in order to think about going one-to-one by issuing devices to every child, things like, all of the work that we've been doing is going to pay off when the time comes because we, we really have been doing research in, in every area in order to, to know enough so that when we know what it has to look like, we're ready to, to step into it and create it. I know, was that specific enough, Carl?
Yes, thank you. It's a challenge, it's a big challenge, my goodness.
Yeah, I'm, I often remind myself of the saying, you know, how do you eat an elephant?
Yeah.
One bite, one bite at a time. That's what we're trying to do here. Figure it out what, just taking a step at a time. Deanna?
So just one, one good piece of news, maybe, um, just as you were discussing the water and the automatic water, I mean, the kids would just have to put their hands in, get wa, wet, then wash their hands for 20 seconds and then rewrite. So you wouldn't have to change any timers or anything on that, right? I mean, we could.
We can teach them to do that, but we have to make sure we teach them to do that because they, you know, they're kids, they walk off. So yeah, I mean, yes, and we'll put signs everywhere and.
Yeah.
And I certainly, I certainly don't want to be the, you know, harbinger of bad news, but, uh, in the guidance, they say that you can't use hand dryers, uh, in the bathrooms and you have to, I know. We just finished a full district-wide install of hair, of hand dryers.
Receiving so much money too.
We're saving a fortune. But like, that's where it's, it's illogical if you, if students' hands are clean and they're using hand dryers, then why is that different than blow drying your hair in a salon or, you know, anything else? So we're trying, going to try to bring some.
Yeah. So it sounds like you have a lot of work with the state because I think most people think there's a lot of inconsistencies on the guidelines. And, and so it, it would be just, um, I, I think it is imperative that, you know, as, as the superintendent's group and as the board of education group, we sort of bring some rationality to some of the irrational guidelines that have been put out there.
Yeah. And we, locally, we have a great partner in our health department. You know, so Jen and the health department and, you know, the town, town offices over there are right in lockstep with us about what makes sense and, and what really doesn't. So that's a good partner for us. And so we can even work through that, some of those channels too.
Thanks.
Yeah, I was just going to add to Deanna, to your point, um, you know, Kay put out a survey, actually, you know, I'll be, I need to review it with Dr. Letzti, but, uh, trying to understand why districts, you know, the response to the summer guidelines. So if you are opening this summer, I mean, most, most all are going, you know, doing virtual summer school. So I think they're trying to understand what the biggest barriers were. I mean, there are many, but what are the real, you know, issues for schools to adopt these guidelines and how can they be written in a way, um, that perhaps, you know, we can all be more productive and open, you know, more reasonably in the fall?
Yeah, and just Katrina, you know, kind of follow on that same thinking, you know, those were written primarily for inner-city districts that have a larger number of kids needing to sort of, you know, get remediation during the summer. And they've made them so onerous that those, those districts who are at least able to afford it, you know, will never be able to adhere to those mandates. So, you know, there's just a huge gap between what, you know, they're trying to achieve and what they've done, so.
Yeah, there's definitely a lot of work to do. Yeah.
I mean, that's why they're guideline, right? I mean, we gotta kind of adapt them for our, our community. I mean, what, you know, we, I think we gotta make sure we keep thinking that we gotta inject reasonableness and at the same time, you know?
Yeah, we do. I mean, we, um, where our, again, being the partnership with the local health department, I think is, uh, is a real asset that we'll be able to leverage when we make some of these decisions. The, you know, we just want to be sure that, uh, you know, we have, we've done everything we can and we have all the protections in place, you know, for the district, for the board, you know, as we, as we go through and, and prepare to open. Yeah. But we're going to try to bring a reasonableness standard to whatever we have to do. But if, you know, if they say, this is how you have to be on the bus, we've got to figure that out. And that's, you know, some of those things. Some of the guidelines are very prescriptive, and I don't, don't think that serves us well. Yeah, I think that, and we've talked about this a little bit, instead of being so precise, it would be better if they gave us kind of overall bigger standards and then let us work locally to figure out how to meet those standards and meet those goals. And, and we're trying to communicate that as well.
Well, just, you know, just to, sorry, this is Carl, to build on Bob's point, it's a good one. They're, they're called guidelines, but what are the legal standing, you know, of those guidelines? And as we, as a board, think about implementing measures, you know, what are, what's the legal liability, for example, of adhering to those guidelines to the letter or doing it, you know, in a way that makes, that's more, has a reasonable, reasonableness test, which I think is gonna be really important here, or else it's just gonna be impossibly expensive and, you know, and a lot of it just ends up being kind of nonsensical to some of the points that, like, you know, Deanna raised. So that'd be an interesting thing to, you know, just to understand that, maybe it's with our attorneys, to, to just kind of understand what the rules of the road are in that respect, in terms of how, how, how hard we have to adhere to these things.
So we have a little information on that, and Dr. Keating, you're welcome to, to jump in. Like, most districts in the state were insured by KERMA, and the town as well is insured by KERMA. And I know you were on a call with them, I believe, Dr. Keating, when this came up.
Yeah, so I'm on their advisory board at KERMA, and the question was asked, you know, "Are we indemnified for any COVID-related issues?" And they said that they were really, at this point, relying on compliance with guidelines. So they very much are taking, you know, they don't want to assume any responsibility for being prescriptive or saying what is or is not acceptable, so they are relying on the guidelines. So that's what we're trying to shift from guidelines to standards, which were held accountable for most of the things that we do in the district. And then locally determining how we're going to meet the standard. And in that way, we think the indemnification question will be easier to answer with KERMA.
Thank you.
I mean, the doc, I just, the document as titled is Rules for Operating Summer Schools, so it feels very prescriptive. I think it, they seem stronger than guidelines to me. And then the other comment I'll make that has to do more with the summer camps, I believe June 7th, Monday? By Monday, there's new guidelines being issued for summer camps, so really, everything is subject to change for outdoor camps even. So it's, it's a, it's a moving target at this point for everything.
Which does make it very, very difficult because you have to make decisions and time for people to plan. And every decision you make is a commitment, one way or the other, for people. And they make their next decisions based on, you know, what your decision was. And if you have to change those decisions because of shifting ground with these guidelines and things, you know, it can start to erode the trust that you have with the community. And then, so it's really, it's, it's a difficult time to be in. So we certainly ask people to recognize that we, we can, we have to make decisions and we're doing that as rapidly as we can. But we also try to do it, we want to make sure we have the, the final word, so to speak, and that the sand won't shift on us, you know, a few days after we make those decisions. If that were to happen, you know, we're, we're still gonna make the best decision possible and try to be as sort of nimble and flexible as we can be. But that's, that's the best we can do. But we also don't want to be getting bounced around back and forth to make this, this decision today and another one tomorrow and another one the day after that. So, you know, I don't think that's healthy or good for anyone. So as we, as we make every one of these decisions, you know, we look at everything that we can, we put an awful lot of time and thought into it, and then, you know, try to make the best possible decision for our families, for our kids, for our teachers and everybody. It's tough.
Agreed, and, you know, I'll just echo the fact, I know there's a tremendous amount of work and thought being put into this on behalf of, you know, the administration and, you know, just really thinking through all the options. And I know that, you know, we look forward as a committee and as a board to sort of discussing those options and really coming up with some really innovative and new ways to, to manage through this, and I believe that we will, so, thank you.
Yeah, me too.
So with that, are there any comments from the public, anybody wishing to address the board?
Again, if so, you can, there's a function, a feature to raise your hand, and if you do, we will call it, wait a minute. You have two minutes.
Okay, don't see anyone. So announcements and future business, Dr. Letzti?
Yes, we have, our next meeting is Ju, Monday, June 15th. It'll be the, after the car parade, so we'll just have to make sure that's the works for everybody. It's at that meeting, that would have been tonight, but again, given the timing on things, it will be honoring and celebrating our retirees. We'll also have our Cabe student award winners, be able to chat with them. And we'll also be inviting our new principal at South Elementary School, Mr. Matt Kaskak, who has served for the last 16 years as the assistant principal over there and is very excited to get going. A press release went out about Matt today, and he will be serving as our new principal. The, so we'll have him come and just say hello to the board at, on that meeting that evening. The, at that meeting also, we'll be talking about the budget for next year and, you know, ways that we have, we're looking at reductions in order to meet the, the cuts that we experienced to the proposal as we went through the budget season this past year. And, you know, we'll, I guess we'll have to end with that, and I like to end on a high note, but I think that we'll end with the budget and, and that's, I know I'll have a statement of account, of course. Other announcements are simply that, you know, we've got eight days of distance learning left. The, our students, our teachers, everyone are, you know, certainly making the most of the situation we're in and the opportunities we have. And just to share it, as I know you are, just how proud I am of, of everybody that's worked so very hard and done such amazing work in, in making the most of this situation for our kids. And as you know, we're gonna do our best to make next year the best it can be. We don't know what it's gonna look like yet, but we are working really hard to figure it out. And as soon as we do, we'll be communicating different pieces to the community as well.
Thank you very much. With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Sheri second, Julie all in favor? All right, thanks, everyone, have a great evening.